Let's do something unusual and start a meeting on time or a minute early. And welcome today to our second meeting of the Board of Trustees of East Tennessee State University. I'd ask Dr. Linville to call the roll, please.
Dr. Olson.
Present.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. DeCarlo.
Present.
Mr. Farner.
Present.
Mr. Golden.
Present.
Mr. Grisham.
Present.
Dr. Latimer.
Present.
Mr. Powell.
Present.
Mr. Ramsey.
Present.
Chairman Nyswonger.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Let me start by saying that the work that has been conducted by the Board of Trustee Committees since our last meeting to prepare for this meeting has been really engaging, the Board's working, our Board is working well together, and the first meeting actually set the stage now for the activity and the real energy part of going forward as a trustee. Again, for the first time in the university's history, these decisions will be made at the campus level. For this reason alone, I would say today is a historic day in the history of ETSU. As noted by Dr. Nolan in his opening comments at the trustee meeting back in March, the advent of the Board provides an opportunity for flexibility, responsiveness, and mission emphasis. More importantly, it provides a chance to enhance shared governance and formalize our efforts to create a culture that is open, transparent, and inclusive. Before moving into the agenda, I would like to make a few comments regarding events that have transpired on campus since our last meeting. 2002, students graduated from ETSU in May, the largest graduating class in our history. Trustee Janet Ayers gave a fantastic commencement address that day, 15 minutes without a note, congratulations, and very, very ill, which didn't show through to your audience. So thank you for duty above and beyond. The men's soccer department won the Commissioner's Cup for the best men's department in SOCOM. One of our doctoral students, Hannah Oaks of Bristol, earned the American Foundation for Pharmaceutical Education Research Fellowship, a highly competitive fellowship that includes $10,000 per year to support her research related to attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. I'm not going to recommend anybody on the Board to be her first patient, but I do want to meet her. ETSU was named a voter-friendly campus and was only one of 83 campuses in 23 states to receive this designation by Campus Vote Project. Before moving to the next item on our agenda, I would like to propose a change to order of items as they appear in that agenda. If you look at your agenda, you will note that listed under Item 11, Executive Session, is a reference to internal audits in progress. At the recommendation of our committee chair, David Golden, I make a motion that we move that item to the open portion of our meeting, and that the item follow the report of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee.
Second, sir.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, we'll go ahead with the approval of the minutes of May 8. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move that we accept the minutes for May 8.
Thank you. And a second, please.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. As noted in the materials found behind Tab 4 in your agenda, a broad range of items have been reviewed by our Board Committees over the past three months. These items range from the adoption of the Charter for Audit Committee to various proposals that support the institution's enrollment growth agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to poll for consideration by full more? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve these items as presented in the consent agenda.
I move for the adoption of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay. Report from the Finance Administration Committee. Turn the meeting over to Chairman Steve DeCarlo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. So I'd like to go through three items, and before we get started, one, I'd like to thank our committee for the efforts they've put in in the three discussions we've had since we were last together as a full board, and specifically, I'd like to mention the help and assistance of P.J. King. Without her, I'm not sure we would be able to move the agenda forward. So let's go through Item A. So Item A, and let me read from this, "In 2017-18, the salary increase proposal and the 2017 equity pay plan methodology." So we need to approve that. The Governor's Budget provided for a 3% salary pool for higher education. The committee is recommending a 2% across-the-board increase with a $500 minimum and a 1% equity pool with a $3,000 maximum. And there was a lot of discussion on that in our committee, a lot of information provided to us, and that is the recommendation of our committee. And if the Board wants, we can do this in sections, and is it appropriate for P.J. to add to it, or we can just move forward? So what is the steps? Do we need to approve one at a time?
Each item is separate on the agenda for a separate vote, so it's how the Chair wishes to proceed if we want to hold all votes to the end, but each item would have to be voted on separately, sir.
Okay. Let's wish the Board, we'll just, let's just vote on each item as they come up.
Thank you, Steve. So that was the first item. I think we should, we should take a vote on that?
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2017-18 salary increase proposal and the 2017 equity pay plan methodology reviewed and recommended by the Finance Administration Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The second item for us to review is the tuition fees for the 2017 and 2018 academic year. This committee is recommending a 3.97% maintenance fee and mandatory fee increase for undergraduate students. Dollar increase per term is $170 at 15 credit hours of enrollment. This increase is within the Tennessee Higher Education Commission's binding limit for fee increases. Graduate students' maintenance and mandatory fees will increase $188 per term at a nine credit hour enrollment. The recommendation increase in College of Medicine maintenance fees is 2%, and the College of Pharmacy, the recommendation is a 3% increase based on comparable institutions and costs. And it is the recommendation of our committee to approve the tuition and fee for the academic year.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And the third item is the approval of the overall university budget for 2017, and the committee is recommending that the following budgets be approved. I think in our minutes will be all the revenues and expenses, and I'm more than happy to read these large numbers, or we can just move forward. But we went through this in detail. I know it seems very quick in a meeting like this, but a lot of detail was provided around the university budget, the College of Medicine budget, the Family in Medicine, and also the College of Pharmacy. And so we're recommending that the revenues for the university at just over $245 million, with expenses at a very similar number, $245 million, followed by the College of Medicine at $58.7 million of revenue and $58.7 million of expenses. Family in Medicine, $16.2 million of revenue, $16.2 million of expenses. The College of Pharmacy, $11.5 million of revenue, $11.4 million of expenses, for a total overall budget of revenues just exceeding $332 million, and costs or expenses at just that 33, I'm sorry, $332 million point one be approved by this committee, this group.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will say that Chairman DeCarlo is exactly right. You go to a meeting like this, I've been involved in many of them, the public is watching and it's being video streamed, and you say, well, not a lot of work went into that. Well, it's just the opposite. And inside our committee, we delved down very deeply into this. Now, that's the way most things like this work. And when you got something to the Senate floor, when I was Senate Speaker, they didn't have a lot of discussion. All that went on in committee. That's kind of what's happening here, the fact that behind the scenes, not only the administration and the people who work for ETSU, but the committee members themselves really delved into this to get to this point. So it's in the budget that gets, it's getting approved in about three minutes. This is a budget that we've had several meetings on to get to this point. I just want to make that point.
All those in favor of the 2017-18 adoption, 2017-18 budget, please say aye.
Aye.
That is our report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, I'd ask Dr. Linda Latimer to present on behalf of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee.
Afternoon, and I too would love to thank the committee for all the work they've been doing in the Academic and Student Affairs Committee. We had a very insightful and informative morning, and one of the agenda items we discussed and unanimously approved by our committee was recommendation to the full Board for the promotion and tenure of faculty members. Unfortunately, Dr. Bach is not able to be with us today as he's recovering from an illness, so would Dr. Bill Kirkwood, who's the Vice Provost for Academic Affairs, please present this agenda item?
I'm very pleased to bring you recommendations for the tenure and/or the promotion of a number of ETSU faculty. You have those lists before you. You'll note that a few of those faculty are being recommended in compliance with ETSU policy, having applied early for either tenure or promotion. Again, this is something that happens virtually every year. And one individual is being recommended for tenure upon appointment, which is also provided for in ETSU policy. We're very pleased to bring this work to you, and it is certainly an example of a great deal of hard work by a great many people, including yourselves, over many, many months to bring us to this point. Dr. Nolan thought that it might be appropriate for you to hear a little bit about ETSU's tenure and promotion process, because it plays such an important role in the lives of our faculty and in the life of the university. And so I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to do that. It won't surprise you to know that receiving tenure is perhaps the milestone achievement in a full-time faculty member's life at ETSU or any other university, because it's a recognition that we want you to be a part of the ETSU community for the foreseeable future. We have that much confidence in you that we would like that to be our relationship. Tenure is important not only for faculty, it is one of the foremost ways in which the university ensures the quality of our faculty, because as you'll hear in a minute, the review process for making recommendations to you for individuals to be tenured is so rigorous and really quite daunting. Faculty, of course, also eagerly await promotion through the successive professorial ranks, because those recommendations acknowledge the excellence of their achievements in teaching, research, or creative activity and service. And so this is recognition from the entire university community culminating in your approval of the excellence of their work. And I might add that it is also a reflection of the excellence of the university, because the achievements that we recognize in promotions are the same kinds of achievements that ETSU is proud to let not only our region, but indeed the country and the entire world know about, as indeed they do. So let me say a little bit about that review process. The bottom line is this, a great many people worked very hard over many, many months to give incredibly close scrutiny to every application for tenure or promotion. The process began about this time last summer, a little later than this perhaps, when faculty who wanted to apply for tenure or promotion began assembling digital dossiers documenting their achievements in teaching, research, or creative activity, and in service to the region, to the university, indeed, in many cases, to the nation or to regions beyond the United States. They spent countless hours preparing those dossiers, and with good reason, because beginning in September of this past year, a whole succession of reviewing bodies scrutinized every aspect of those dossiers. So it was time well spent for the faculty. The first such group to do so were faculty in the Department of the Individual applying for tenure or promotion. The faculty who review applications for tenure promotion themselves must meet certain criteria. Typically, they are tenured, they have to be at the same rank as the individual or a higher rank than the rank to which someone is applying for. And they, despite the fact that they're reviewing, or perhaps because they're reviewing the application of a colleague, they look very, very closely at that application, because they will be the individuals most immediately affected by the decision. From there, their recommendation goes to the Chair of the Department, who reaches his or her own independent conclusions about the merits of the application. So the Chair of the Department will consider the finding of the Faculty Committee, he or she will do an independent reading of all the material in the dossier, and will then form a recommendation, which goes to the Dean of the college in which that department is housed. However, the Dean doesn't get to act on it yet, because that recommendation is reviewed by a committee of faculty from across the college, who evaluate that and all applications within the college on their merits, and only then does that recommendation go to the Dean, who again, like all those before him or her, forms an independent opinion of the merits of the recommendation. It is not unheard of, or one level, to disagree with the previous level's recommendation. So this is by no means a rubber-stamp process all the way through and including the Board of Trustees. The Dean's recommendation goes to the Vice President, who similarly conducts a review of all of those applications, requires many, many hours of reading by our Vice Presidents, and then finally, those move on to the Office of the President, where again, those applications receive close scrutiny. And so it's with considerable pride that we brought these recommendations to the Board of Trustees for the first time now in the history of the university. We're proud of the individuals whom we're recommending for tenure and promotion. We think that these recommendations speak very highly of our university. And if you do have any questions about any of the other recommendations coming forward, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of our committee to approve the tenure recommendation as presented, noting that all the individuals offered for the Board's consideration have undergone a thorough review and have no pending personnel or disciplinary actions.
As a faculty member, I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I believe I'm standing here for a moment longer, Chairman.
So are you also going to present the recommendation of periodic notification of academic actions?
Yes. And I'd like simply to call to your attention that ETSU policy recently approved by you calls for notification of the Board of Trustees of a number of academic actions that don't require Board of Trustees approval. You've received a report, as you will, I believe, on a roughly quarterly basis, that indicates actions taken in recent months. You also have prepared by others in our office descriptions of each of those actions, which represent things like, in some cases, changing the names of programs, splitting departments, terminating programs, in some cases, changing curricular requirements, things of these sorts. And again, I would be happy to answer any questions, but again, this is a notification item.
Mr. Chair, I just would comment, one of the ones that caught my eye was the STEM K-12 education graduate certification. I commend the university for identifying that need, and it's a crying need, of how do we get STEM and stream education in K-12 earlier and faster? I've looked through the force materials, and it's something that if I could work in my scope, I would love to take. So I just commend the university.
Now move to agenda item seven, our Audit Committee. Turn that to Chairman David Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had, I can't call it routine business, because it was our first Audit Committee of this sort in the new structure, but we let off after approving the minutes from the May 8 meeting to be presented to us the Audit Plan for 2017-2018 by Rebecca Lewis, who is the university's Audit Director. The Audit Plan is how she and her staff will deploy resources to provide us as the Board assurance that the operation of the university is going, is consistent with good controls and efficient operation, and part of the audits will be risk-based and part are required, which is a pretty standard format for an Audit Plan. The committee approved the 2017-18 Audit Plan. We next reviewed the Recommendation Log, which is the summary of previous audits and management's commitment to identify, to close gaps that were identified. I commend Rebecca has engineered a nice color-coded score sheet of red, yellow, and green. We saw mostly greens, a couple of yellows, and we also decided as a committee that if we ever do see a red, we will invite someone besides the Audit Director to come and report to us about that. And so a very good follow-up system. And then we received a heat map of recently completed audits. We then broke into an executive session where we reviewed an investigation that the Audit Director has been engaged on since February of this year, involving the men's tennis, the men's tennis program specifically centered around the men's tennis coach. We reviewed this in executive session, it's been an ongoing investigation, and the Audit Committee concluded that the investigatory report was to the point where we could accept it and finalize it as such. It is now a public document and is being made available publicly. Just to give the rest of the Board a high-level summary, since this was just made, I would make a couple of points. One, you can't help but review this without concluding that it is a detailed, extremely well-researched report, and what it concluded was that the men's tennis coach engaged in fraud, waste, and abuse to the level of $85,674.61 of fraud, and an additional $20,747.63 of abuse of vacation policy. The university and the scheme that he engaged in was fairly sophisticated, involving the falsification in certain instances of very good counterfeiting of receipts and invoices, including reimbursement for meal money at home and away meets, stringing fees, registration fees, and other travel and miscellaneous expenditures, and going back as early as 2010. I commend the Audit Group for doing an excellent job of painstakingly tracking down, interviewing, going to other universities to obtain additional documentation, interviewing current and former players, and really doing an exceptional job in a very short amount of time, as this concern was first raised in February of this year. Those who have ever seen investigations done, it's not abnormal for investigations this sort to drag on for a lot longer. So the university, in my estimation and the committee's estimation, took this extremely seriously, did the right thing, jumped on it, got to the endpoint, and then in the investigatory report has proposed changes to the controls that would help prevent this from recurring again. Now, I hasten to add that there's no control that can be put in place that will guarantee that we will never have fraud, waste, or abuse. Someone who's determined to engage in that will engage in it, and in the short run, may engage in it and be successful. But this is to help prevent that from recurring. I'm happy to take any questions from the Board, as you would like, but it was the committee's opinion that this was well done, that management's response was appropriate, that the university in no eyes impeded the investigation, and that in all regards, the right thing was done. We have Dr. Richard Sander here today, the university's Athletic Director, who concurs with the findings and will faithfully ensure that the changes noted in the report are implemented within the department, and there will be additional audits going forward of the Athletic Department on a random basis. Of course, while the audit has been made public, the Board, it would be beyond the purview of the Board to comment or speculate on any criminal charges that may or may not be pursued against the former coach. And I would hasten to add that the coach resigned in March of this year. That is my report.
Thank you, David. Any further questions for David? Okay. With that, we'll move on to Item 8 on the agenda, the MOU, and I would ask Dr. Wilson Bishop to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a little brief slideshow as an introduction that might be helpful to the Board of Trustees. This is an MOU between East Tennessee State University and Mountain State's Health Alliance, and was primarily with a focus on the Academic Health Sciences Center. So since you're still in the orientation phase of being a Board Member, I wanted to point out that there are five colleges that are particularly affected by this MOU. These are the five colleges within our Academic Health Sciences Center. To be in a HSC, you have to have at least a College of Medicine and at least one other health profession school. There are about 130 academic health science centers in the United States. Some have their own university hospitals, some do not. Some are affiliated, as we are, and we have... Okay. We'll stop at this one. This will give you a little bit of an idea of who we are. About 4,000 students a year are enrolled in our graduate and undergraduate programs. We graduate about 1,000 students a year from our Academic Health Sciences, and you can see that we have 16 baccalaureate degrees, 12 masters, 12 doctoral, and joint programs between medicine and public health, pharmacy and public health, as well as pharmacy and business. We also have 260 medical residents. This is too small for you to see, but it's in your packet, and it's a breakdown of all the programs we offer, their enrollment, their graduation, and the number of faculty that we have. We do affiliate with four health systems, Frontier Health, the Mountain Home VA Healthcare System, Mountain State's Health Alliance, and Willmont Health System. We have had varying affiliation agreements, professional services contracts, and other wa- ways of doing business with each of these systems over the last 60 years that we've had health programs at Eastern State University. But as talk of the merger came about in the last year, as we've looked at how we've grown, how our relationship has grown with each of these health systems, it became important that we look at developing a MOU that was more of an umbrella MOU that would describe both our operations and relationship in a more formal way than we have in the past. So you might want to know what we do in relationship with our business with Mountain States. We have about $15 million a year in contract exchange with them from resident salaries, contracts for professional services, contracts for services we provide to them or for particular employees that we have who provide services on their behalf. We run a significant number of students through their hospitals throughout the region and their health centers. You can see that our Clinical and Rehabilitative Health Sciences has 214 students that are placed in 10 sites within Mountain State every year. College of Nursing, which is one of the largest schools of nursing in the state, has 762 students a year who practice in Mountain State's health facilities. Our Gatton College of Pharmacy places 113 students for residency experiences and other student placements. And Quillan College of Medicine, at some point, has all of their medical students rotate through Mountain State's Health Alliance hospitals, and we have 103 and a half, don't ask me about the half resident. It's really hard to get a half of them, but we have 103 residents in the Mountain State system. We have 71, I believe, in Wellmont's system, and 85 at the VA. So you can see that we have a large number of medical residents who function in Mountain State's Health Alliance. So as we talked about formalizing our structure within the MOU to bring our activities together, a large part of it is truly to get formal ways that we can interact as a university with the health system. It's ways that we can maximize our health professional educational programs for this region in the same way that Mountain State's is looking to maximize its healthcare delivery programs for the region. So with a formal MOU, with a formal coordinating council that will give us an opportunity to do strategic planning together, will allow us an opportunity to do needs assessments of the region, will allow us to focus on those things that each system does best in order to, together, enhance and maximize the delivery of both education and healthcare to the region. We've entered into this agreement that will provide joint councils that will focus on education, focus on research, and will focus on clinical care delivery, as well as our overall coordinating council. One thing that is very important to you as a member of our Board of Trustees is that our coordinating council would place a member of our Board of Trustees on the coordinating council, and that would be a member of the Mountain State's Board of Trustees on the coordinating council. And we're excited about that because that provides a community involvement in making these strategic decisions going forward to serve our region. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I could just offer a comment. I want to thank Dr. Bishop, Dr. Lindblom, and all of the individuals who've been involved in the development of the MOU. This is something that collectively, at a high level, both among your staff as well as on the Mountain State side, we've spent considerable time formalizing what have been general agreements that have guided the operations of their system and our university for the better part of decades. This MOU formalizes those agreements and provides a path moving forward as we continue that partnership with Mountain State. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Bishop and Dr. Lindblom in particular for their work. They are the true authors of this document. That's before you for your approval.
Sure. One thing, in the past, we've just been operating on a handshake, for a better term, as opposed to, I'm understanding it's more or less formalized as it puts it into a document?
We have a number of contracts, we have affiliation agreements, we have a number of personal, professional service agreements, but they have all been negotiated kind of one-on-one and unit to unit. And we wanted to bring it together under one umbrella MOU and have an opportunity for, if there were disputes, they could go, they would have a pathway to go forward. It would also prevent redundancy, and it would allow us to plan together. So we've always had some type of formal relationship, but nothing under the umbrella perspective or in the, I think, the scope of this, a formal way of working together. A lot of it has been based on informal relationships, but this formalizes a lot of those.
Have you started to put in the process the research team that you're going to collaborate with to make things better for Mountain State and ETSU?
Over the last two years, as the merger talks have been proceeding, Mountain State and Wellmont put in place a number of strategic task forces that looked at various aspects of care delivery, and I happen to chair the one on academics and research. So for about a year, we had people from all across the region talking about how we might increase the research enterprise should this merger come about, and we have the resources of ETSU along with Mountain State, Wellmont, and the other health and educational institutions in the region. So we have a model that we have begun to talk about how we can bring together, because ETSU is the major research university in the region, we can bring resources that we already have in place and in operation into a system that's already heavily focused on clinical trials and other levels of research. Obviously, we have a focus on research related to rural healthcare and rural healthcare delivery and translating the work that we do into rural regions. So we're excited about this in this joint research council. We're going to be populating, after the MOU is approved, we will be populating these research councils with people from both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I think I speak for everyone in this room and how proud we are of our health-related colleges. Thank you. This time, I'd like to make a motion that would authorize the President of the University to execute the MOU with Mountain State's Health Alliance, as outlined in your materials. Have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to invite our Chief Legal Counsel, Ed Kelly, to provide us an overview on the records of ours.
Good afternoon. I attended a reunion recently, and people asked me, they said, "When are you going to retire?" "We retired." I said, "Why did you retire?" And they said, "Well, it's boring." And I said, "Isn't your job boring?" And I said, "No, I have 13,000 teenagers every week. Planning something is going to surprise me on Monday morning." In 40 years in this business, I haven't had a boring week yet. So it is interesting. In the interest of time, we have, my office has provided a handbook of legal matters that you may want to take a look at, and we really don't need to go through that. But I would like to introduce you to our Office of Legal Affairs and the kind of things we do. Well, one thing we do is litigation. We have litigation represented by the Attorney General's Office. We work closely with the Attorney General's Office. On occasion, I've been designated as Special Assistant Attorney General to do litigation and appeals myself, and we have employment litigation, we have constitutional litigation, we have contracts litigation, we have almost any kind of litigation you can imagine, like a corporation counsel of a city might have, that we have this kind of litigation. And being a public university, often we have issues of constitutional magnitude, free speech issues, due process issues that come into play. Employment issues take up a tremendous amount of our workload because we have such a different workforce than most people do. We have, I think somebody mentioned this morning, we have 2,600 employees. Well, the fact is, we have these quasi-employees, we have these graduate students, we have residents, where we argue in different courts, sometimes they're employees, sometimes they're not employees for different purposes. We have adjunct, a very large adjunct contingent that does a lot of our teaching. We have faculty, we have tenured faculty, we have term faculty, we have lecturers, we have clinical faculty, all of which have different implications. So employment law takes a great deal of our time working on various issues involving employees as well. And of course, with students, we often have due process issues, we have free speech issues, we have issues of Title IX more recently that come into play. And then another, consistent with really what Wilson was just talking about, is we have a lot of things going on, and the health sciences give us a lot of work because they're so active, they're so active in research, they're so active in grants, they're so active in partnerships. These memorandum of understandings and other documents that are negotiated, we have transactions and contracts as a big part of our workload. We have auxiliary corporations, which include the ETSU Foundation, and also our EdSurf, our Research Foundation. So we have patent issues, we have intellectual property issues, we have all of those issues that come to play. In our ETSU Foundation, we may have legal issues involving donors or involving plans that we have as well. So we have these auxiliary corporations, which we work very closely with. Immigration is a big area, international programs is another that brings us a great deal of work as well. So as you can see, it's being a corporation counsel, but also with the corporation counsel, with the College of Medicine, with the Division One Athletics, with all kinds of activities that cause and create legal issues that we resolve, and we resolve them pretty regularly with the help of a terrific staff. Troy Perdue, our Deputy Counsel, has come from a large law firm doing transactions and councils, and he's worked very closely with pretty much everybody in this room on various transactions that we're dealing with, whether it be medical, whether it be outreach, any kind of transaction. Lisa Williams, the Associate Counsel, works on contracts, and she does immigration. We have a very large immigration practice, both in the student, in the student level, people coming in with F1s, and the employment level, people coming in with H1Bs. And we are very sensitive to the needs to be able to control and to enhance and expedite, where appropriate, our immigration issues. And international, I think I mentioned international programs, and the College of Medicine, we have some of those employees that are doctors but are also part of a physician's practice plan. So we have employees who are not exactly the same all the way through, and we have to deal with the issues that might arise out of that as well. In the College of Medicine, we have medical malpractice cases that come about through that. We have slip and falls that happen, people coming out of the stadium and falling. We have pretty much all of the traditional legal issues that might come to a legal affairs office. Any questions on that part of the roll before I move to the open meetings? If not, we can move to the next, and the one behind, as we're going to deal with open meetings and open records. And I understand at the last meeting, there was a presentation by the THEC, so I will try to keep this brief and not duplicate what was going on in the other meeting. When we talk about openness and transparency, we were the 46th state in the Union to pass a open meetings law and learned a lot from what others did, but learned it really to make everything more open. We have probably the most open Records Act in the country, and the open meetings law is very strict as well. So as an entity of the Tennessee State Government, the university and its Board of Trustees are charged with operating the letter and spirit of the specific laws and principles, the spirit being towards open meetings. And we have that public policy, and the public policy exemplifies itself in the open meetings law and in the open records law. Let me go to the next one. Things to remember: meetings, such as this one, are to be open to the public. A meeting is defined, and I'm sure that this was covered with THEC, any convening of two or more trustees, either to make a decision or to deliberate towards a decision. Key there being, for this particular purpose, to make a decision or to deliberate towards a decision. It includes email and telephone discussions, and adequate notice must be given to the public. Ironically, the statute doesn't tell us exactly what adequate notice is because it says, depending on the meeting, depending on the Board, depending on what the obligations are, five days might be good for one group, seven days might be good for another, and what's the question of reasonable is something the courts determine over time. It includes emails, includes texts, and other areas in a meeting process. If any member participates electronically, the vote has to be via a roll call. And we're new to this. We have the other five attorneys at the other universities that are the subject of the Focus Act. We get together every two weeks, we call ourselves the Gang of Six, and we take a look at how we interpret these and try to create some unanimity in how we're interpreting things like the open meetings law and the open records act. Okay, can we go to the next one? Now, what are the exceptions to the Open Records Act? One exception is, in the statute, is onsite inspections of a project or a program, is not a meeting. And from that, we can also see a day-long tour of facilities, perhaps, with presentations by college officers, would not be an open meeting. Or if President Nolan has a workshop for strategic planning for faculty and staff, and the Board chooses to come to that, it's not necessarily an open meeting. So we do have exceptions and carve-outs from that, and it does not keep people from going to dinners together, it does not keep people from doing things together, it just requires them not to deliberate, and it requires them to maintain some isolation from the real duties of the Board, the kind of things we'd be doing in an open meeting, but not prohibit interaction between Board members. Rob? We go one more. Executive session. Some questions arose about executive session, and ironically, the executive session kind of transfers itself from the internal audit function. Internal audit, the statute calls for executive sessions in the cases of litigation, audits or investigations, such as the one we just discussed. Information protected by federal law, such as the Family Education Rights Privacy Act that we'll talk about in a minute, are matters involving information where the informant has requested anonymity. And we have that, and that applies to the internal audit, it applies to the internal audit committee. However, there is a subsection F, we can go to the next one, and subsection F says, "As long as it's one of the five exceptions that we talk about for the internal audit, the statute is not intended to prevent the full state governing board, commission, council, or equivalent body from going into confidential, non-public executive session for the purpose of further discussion of those matters, of those five matters." So for instance, in an executive session, if we call the executive session today, and we had issues such as the internal audit, had it been in the investigatory phase, we might bring that up in an executive session to discuss. If there's a litigation matter, we might be discussing that. Falls within those five categories, we can agree to it. There's another exception, Rob, could we go to the next one? Yeah, the other one is, if we go to executive session and if we look at records, there's an attorney-client privilege. It's not in the statute, but the courts have ruled attorney-client privilege applies to what we do in an executive session. We have to be careful about that, we'll get into that in a little bit more detail. With public records, almost every record created, maintained, or received by the university or a university employee is covered by the Public Records Act. That means it's in until it's out, that the answer to almost every request for a public record is yes, until we look at whether it falls within a particular exception or whether it falls within an exception carved out by the courts. Public records are defined broadly, include papers, letters, basically anything you can think of, text messages, regardless of physical form, emails and texts. Often, we've had questions about a private server. Well, it's not whether it's a private server or a public server, it's what's the thing about? Is it about a transaction involving business? Then that's what comes about. Another issue that comes about is, well, is this discoverable? People always ask me, "Was this discoverable?" Well, there's a difference between it being an open record and it being discoverable. Open record does have some limitations. Discovery usually comes in the course of a lawsuit or subpoena, and very little is not turned over in discovery. So we should distinguish between discovery and whether somebody gets information under an Open Records Act. Discovery comes along with litigation. Rob? Carve-outs. There's a statutory carve-out, which includes gifts to East Tennessee State There's a statutory carve-out, which includes gifts to East Tennessee State University, for instance. There's a particular statute that says records regarding gifts to the university are confidential and are not subject to the Open Records Act. Trade secrets, patentable material that we might have through the Research Foundation or others, that would be protected. There's a judicial carve-out for the attorney-client privilege and attorney-work product. When we get a request, and all of us get a request for public records, one important thing is we bring it to one office of the university, and that's the Office of University Advancement. They're right next door to me, probably for a reason that once these things get to them, they come to us to look and see if we're in compliance and whether something is releasable or not. So the Office of University Relations is responsible for all public records requests. A trustee should immediately, or any employee, should immediately forward or any request for records to the Office of University Relations. And then the Office of University Counsel would work with them to make the determinations to whether information is subject to the law. And something we often do, because student records are private under federal law, is we redact student records from the documentation or we would redact other things that have to be redacted before we give the document. Or sometimes we refuse to give the document because it falls under some statutory exception. So there's a review. It's not just a matter of finding the documents, copying them and sending them to somebody. Somebody has to review all of these documents to be sure that we're in compliance with the law. Rob? Attorney-client privilege. We have to be careful about that because it's easily waived by discussing with a third party. For instance, when we go into executive session and we're talking about litigation, we have to make sure that we're only talking to the clients, the board of trustees, the secretary, the president, and everyone else has to leave the room. It has to maintain, one of the reasons is to maintain an attorney-client privilege. It's often waived by discussing with third-party communication. It must be from or with the attorney or the attorney general, if it's a matter of litigation where the attorney general's with us. Written communication should be marked privileged and confidential. Documents to be reviewed by counsel may or may not be privileged. Must be forwarded for the purpose of seeking legal advice. So I can't create protection by sending it to lawyers. That doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be privileged. However, if it's in the conduct of legal advice or in the conduct of giving legal advice, that's very important. As I said earlier, distinguish open records and its exceptions versus discovery in the course of litigation. Discovery is much broader, it's a much broader element. Student records, this is a big area for privacy. As the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, or FERPA, you'll often hear it called, places significant restrictions on the disclosure and handling of student records. The second part of that is it gives the students the right to get a hold of their own records under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. The Open Records Act specifically acknowledged that these records must be kept confidential. So often we'll conduct a review when records are going out to make sure that there's no identifying information that's given to it. We have a lot of health facilities, a lot of health programs, a lot of programs that deal with patients. And we have issues of patient privacy as well. Lindsay Daniel, who's our assistant counsel, really doing an awful lot with health-related matters, is also the compliance officer for HIPAA, the Health Insurance Privacy Act, to make sure that that's covered as well. And that covers my presentation. I hope I didn't overlap much on what was done by THEC. But if you have any further questions, please feel free to give us a call. Any questions?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Item 10 today, presentation on student recruiting. I'd like to invite, boy, a director of admissions.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. As has been mentioned, my name is Brian Henley and I'm the admissions director here at ETSU. I've been with ETSU for about four years. Prior to that, worked at another, well, a school in Oregon out west, a school in Arizona, a school in Tennessee. So I've sort of come full circle over the last 22 years in doing this admissions work. One of the first things I want to say is while the Office of Admissions, we have a staff of about 25 people or so. We're responsible for primarily doing student outreach and recruitment and coordinating that work for the university. But we also know that university recruitment is a university-wide effort too. And we couldn't do this work without our campus colleagues in student affairs, including financial aid, our colleagues in equity and diversity, our colleagues in housing. So thank you to everybody who does that work. And I want you to know, we don't take full responsibility for the work that we do. We do take full responsibility for the work that we do, but we're not exclusively responsible for the student recruitment work. How's that? As we start talking about this a little bit, I think it's important for us to be reminded very quickly about the university's strategic plan. All of you know that the university has set a goal or has a strategic plan in place to go out to the year 2026. And within that strategic plan, there's some very specific enrollment-related targets. The overarching target there is to have an overall enrollment of 18,000 students. And that includes students on campus, students at remote locations and online students. 18,000 students would represent an increase of about 3,700 students from where we are now to the next 10 years. So that's an increase of approximately 26% in student enrollment over that time. We also want to have, within that 18,000, we want to have 3,500 students who are out of state and international. That would increase, or that would represent an increase of about 675 students from where we are now, or an increase of about 24%. We've also got some retention and graduation goals there. But additionally, we have a goal of receiving 12,000 applications for admission in the next 10 years with an average ACT score of 22. That would represent about a 5,000, between 5,000 and 6,000 student application increase over where we are, or an increase of about 75%. So in the admissions office, it's important for us to take those larger goals and begin to break them down into some smaller goals so we can tell whether we're making progress annually. So this year, we know that we need to increase the number of applications roughly 8% to keep us on track toward that 12,000 goal in 10 years. One of the big targets that we have is to enroll a class of 2,100 students. This presentation is focusing primarily on freshman student recruitment. So 2,100 students is our goal. We always want to increase the level of academic preparation of the entering class. I'll talk about that in just a little bit. Increase the number and percentage of students from traditionally underrepresented racial or ethnic groups. I will show you in just a minute why, while that is certainly the right thing for us to do. Also, I think it's imperative for us to do that if we're going to meet these enrollment goals over the next 10 years. And then while this is not a scholarship presentation, certainly scholarships play a role in our student recruitment. And back to that 3,500 international and out-of-state students, we, within the admissions office, want to strategically use some of the out-of-state scholarships that we have. Just for your information, for students who live within a 250-mile radius of ETSU and meet certain academic requirements, they are eligible for a $15,000 per year scholarship called the Georgia Carter Scholarship. And I'll reference that a couple of times throughout the next few minutes. So we got the goals. Now I think it's important, if we're going to know where we're going, we need to know sort of where we've been. So this is historic freshman enrollment back to the year 2000. So you all can see from the slides, you know, 2000 to, what, about 2004 or so, we're tripping along, 1,500 students or so, a little below 1,500 each year. And then all of a sudden, 2004, we see this big bump. There've been two events that have significantly changed the landscape in the state of Tennessee in this timeframe. One, the class of 2004 was the first class that was eligible for the Tennessee Lottery Scholarship. So I think that played a role. I think we started to see more students coming into the college pipeline. I think we started to see possibly more students who would have gone out of state staying in state. So as you look at this enrollment growth, this is ETSU, but you see a similar pattern across most four-year universities in the state during that time. Significant event number two. The class of 2015 was the first class that was eligible for Tennessee Promise, which made community college free for any student who graduated from high school in the state. So you see, we're tripping along about, you know, 1,500 students or so. All of a sudden, we get this big bump. We're up around 2,100 or so for a couple of years. Didn't quite get there, I think 2087 was the high number. Fell back down, back up over 2,000, and then we've had a decrease over the last couple of years. This year's freshman class was 1,886 students. So to get to that 2,100 goal, we need to add about 214 students to the class, which represents an increase of about 11%. I talked a little bit about raising the level of academic preparation for students. And know that I don't see that as a goal in itself. We are a regional university. We're here to serve the students of this region. And I, in my core, believe that we should be about giving students an opportunity for higher education who might not see themselves in higher education. But we are in the business of recruiting students, but we're also about retaining them and getting them through to graduation. And these leading indicators, grade point average and ACT score, are the best predictors that we have for who's going to be successful. So you can see over the course of about the last four years or so, we have had a steady increase in our average GPA. Now, the numbers are relatively small. I mean, we're talking about a 3.32 GPA in 2012, up to about a 3.47 GPA for this year's entering class, this recent year's entering class. ACT score has risen from 22.1 or so. This year, it went up to a 23.2, just about. Now, I know you're thinking, one-point increase on the ACT doesn't sound like that much. But when you think about a test that scored on a scale from 0 to 36, that one-point increase is relatively significant. And we're already starting to see some of the early indications that we're getting results in retention down the road. I'm just going to go back through here a little bit. All right. So we kind of got the goals, we've sort of seen where we've been. I think it's important for us to look at what the likelihood of attaining those goals is. There's an organization called the Western Interstate Commission on Higher Education that shows historic, they research historic high school enrollment graduation rates. And then they project out what high school graduation rates in particular states are going to be over the next, I think it goes out to 2034. So this is WICHE's projection on Tennessee. And you can see, you know, things are tripping along. About 2010 or so, we hit a peak, it fell back down. We're sort of in a trough here in high school graduates in the state of Tennessee. And then it's going to increase back up to 2025. But if you look over here on the right, you'll see that the total number of high school graduates is projected to increase by about 0.8% in the state of Tennessee out to 2026. So we're in a time of growth, but we're not in a time of significant growth. High school graduation numbers are going to be relatively steady for the next several years. Now, as I was talking about recruiting students from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds, I think this is a very telling slide as well. Again, I believe in my core that the best education and preparation for work in an ever-diversifying workforce is education in an adverse setting. But if you look at this, remember, the growth's relatively small, but look where the growth is. The top line is students who identify as white ethnically. The second line is students who identify as Latino ethnically, African-American students, Asian-Pacific Islander students and the Native American students. The growth in Tennessee in the high school graduates is going to be over the next several years from students who identify as Latino or Hispanic. And this trend is national. I mean, this is not just Tennessee. In fact, the growth in many other states is greater than this in Latino, in the Latino graduation. So let's look in our surrounding states a little bit. Virginia's projected to grow, not a lot, about 6.3%. North Carolina's projected to add about 10% in high school graduates over the next couple, over the next 10 years or so. And then while the numbers are not as large in South Carolina, they are also projected to increase the number of high school graduates by a little over 13%, almost 14% by 2025. So this leads me to two pretty significant conclusions. One is we're going to, if we're going to maintain our enrollment and grow, then we're going to have to capture a larger market share in Tennessee. We're going to have to do a better job of attracting students from Latino backgrounds. And I think we're going to have to reach out into some of those bordering states and attract students across state lines. The Latino initiative is the reason that we in our office about two years ago made a commitment to hiring an admission counselor who's bilingual, English, Spanish. Now we have two folks in our admissions office who are bilingual, English and Spanish. All right, so sort of historical information, what the frontier looks like. Now we can start talking about some of the activities that we in the admissions office engage in to recruit students. And, you know, ultimately, in my mind, student recruitment is about relationship building. It's about building relationships with the communities that we serve. It's about building relationships with school counselors. It's about building relationships with high school teachers. And it's about building relationships with our colleagues on campus and ultimately about building those relationships with students and their parents too. But those of you who are familiar with sales are, you know, very familiar with a similar model. But we think of enrollment in terms of a funnel. The top of the funnel, I think of as building brand. Basically, that is lead generation. Then, once we've got all those prospects in there, we try to convert those prospects to applicants. Then we do the processing to make the admission decisions. And then once we've got the students admitted, we start working on what we refer to as yield, which is that transition from an admitted student into a committed student or a student who says he or she plans to enroll. And then finally, we get them registered and we start trying to keep them registered, which is summer melt is something that's referred to frequently in the admissions world about folks who have committed but who ultimately don't end up in your enrollment at some point. So as we start talking about building brand, one of the things that we do, and I think it's really important, is we've got about seven admission counselors. And we divide the state and the area and the country up into geographic territories. And each admission counselor is assigned a geographic territory. And then that counselor works with the students in the high schools in that area and builds the relationships with the schools and school counselors, et cetera. So we're out visiting high schools. President Nolan has gotten involved in this for us and with us considerably over the last several years. We also, in the last couple of years, have committed to attending every college fair on the statewide coordinated calendar. So we're literally visiting schools, participating in college fairs from Memphis to Mountain City, or Mountain City to Memphis, throughout the course of the year. Last year, in an attempt to build relationships with our local area high schools, we came up with a concept of a guest lecture series. We have faculty members who are willing to go out into high schools. So we recruited 11 faculty members who go out, give presentations in their high schools. So we've got a biology faculty member who went to Science Hill High School and gave an address to the Science Hill AP Biology class, for example. I think building those kinds of relationships and again, getting faculty members involved in that recruitment is an important thing. And I didn't mention, you all have a packet, it's a folder that looks like this. And I've given you several of our brochures in there as well, if you haven't found those two. But the brochure about the guest lecture series is in there. Our website is our single most important recruitment tool that we have. And about four years ago, we redesigned our website. We are now in the process of working to redesign that website again. It's sort of a challenge because it's got to be informational, but then it's also got to be very student-focused and very student-oriented and marketing-oriented. So we're in the process of redesigning that now. The admissions office operates three social media accounts, a Twitter account, a Facebook account, and then an Instagram account. Our goal there is to send student-centric messages out. So we send deadline reminders, we send apply-for-admission notifications and things like that, trying to make sure that we're working hand-in-glove with the university's social media accounts, but also making sure that we're addressing our audience the best that we can. Last year, we began a high school counselor bus-in program. We went to Knoxville, we picked up 15 counselors and we brought them to campus. President Nolan was kind enough to host them for dinner at Shell Ridge. We put them up in the Carnegie. Throughout the course of the next couple of days, they had an opportunity to meet with folks in scholarships and financial aid and housing. folks in scholarships and financial aid and housing, and talk to different academic departments. So our goal there is to expand that brand a little bit farther. Counselors in Knoxville know us, but they leave here knowing a lot more about us and are much more prepared to have conversations with their students about ETSU when they leave. One of the big things that we do is we have a partnership with a higher-end marketing company called Royal &amp; Company. And Royal &amp; Company assists us in the purchase of student names and then reaching out to those students. The whole goal there is to get students interested in ETSU enough to respond to us. So we buy the names of sophomores, and this is about 75,000 names. We buy the names of sophomores and juniors, and we break it up into four different markets. You see, primary there is Tennessee. We buy the names of just about every available student in Tennessee who looks like they meet our admission requirements. Same thing in those border county areas. Those light-green border county areas are areas where students get in-state tuition if they come to ETSU. That darker blue section there is 150-mile radius outside of Tennessee. We try to buy the names of students who appear eligible for the Carter Scholarship that I mentioned earlier. And then that lighter blue section is a 250-mile radius, and in that area, we buy the names of students who have expressed an interest in health, in the health sciences. We think if we're going to get a student who's coming from that far, we think that our health science reputation likely precedes us, and if we can get them to apply, then we think we've got a relatively high likelihood of getting them to enroll. So now, and again, all that communication that we do with those students is intended to get them to respond to us and say, hey, send me your next piece of information. And then as soon as they respond, we get them in our communication cycle. So now, you know, we hope we've done a good job of getting our name out, building the brand, generating those leads, and now we're on to generating the applications. Again, talking about the funnel. So we're still doing high school visits and college fairs. We, in the admissions office, host campus tours Monday through Friday during the school year, and then on selected Saturdays where students can come, have an information session, go on a campus tour, meet with folks in various departments if they're interested in that. We're still sending targeted mailings. Our big one that we send in August is the viewbook. That's the eight-and-a-half-by-11 piece that you have, along with a letter encouraging students to apply for admission. Every fall and spring, we have, we have two big open house programs on campus on Saturdays. At one of those, in conjunction with our colleagues in Equity and Diversity, we have a program called Discover ETSU, where we specifically invite students from low-income or underrepresented, underrepresented populations to campus. This past year, we tried something a little bit different in providing bus transportation for students to discover ETSU from Chattanooga and Knoxville. And then again, one of the big things that we do is our application marketing campaign that we do in conjunction with Royal &amp; Company. Every year, we buy the names of about 35,000 additional high school seniors who weren't available in the searches that we did before. Believe it or not, there are some students that don't raise their hand until they're, until they're seniors. So we go and, we buy the names of that, those 35,000 seniors. Royal &amp; Company, on our behalf, reaches out to them, Tennessee Border County College, the Carter Scholarship areas, and then the broader out-of-state, out-of-state for health sciences. They've developed a very, a very mobile-friendly, dynamic application for us, and then we promise them, the students, that we're going to, we're going to give them a two-week admission decision. So we're going to respond to them quickly. They're going to get automatic consideration for scholarships based on their location, and each communication depends on where the student lives. We include two paper mailings and then about 15 emails, and then through this effort, we generated about 34,000 applica, or 3,400 applications this year. I'm going to go back up and mention the fact that we waived the out-of-state application fee for students this year. So students who responded directly to our application marketing, who lived out-of-state, we made the decision, you can apply with no $25 application fee. We think if we can get them to apply, get them the scholarship, get them interested, then we might have a likelihood of getting them here. But sometimes that $25 application fee is just a, a commitment they're not really, really willing to make at the application stage. Got the applications. Now we're selecting the class. ETSU, we do not require application essays. We don't ask for letters of recommendation, so we think efficiency is our, to our advantage. So we worked really hard to promise students that we'll get back to them within two weeks from the time their application's complete. And this year, even in our busiest processing time, we were able to meet that goal. To me, the most important part of the funnel is that yield portion. The days when you could assume that a completed application was a relatively high indication that a student was going to enroll at your university are gone. I mean, we can assume now that students are going to apply to four or five different colleges or universities. Many of them are applying to 10 or more. I was meeting with a director of school, an international, at an international school just this week, and he said they make all their students apply to 15 schools. So that yield is really, really important. Once we've got the application, that's when the recruitment just is really getting started. So in the last four years or so, we've added admitted student receptions in Chattanooga and, and in Knoxville. So we go, and Mr. Grisham's been there with us before, we go and we meet with admitted students. Again, targeted mailings, you've got in your brochure, our multicultural brochure that we sent out this year. The "Graduation Begins Today" brochure is one that we send out to all admitted students, encouraging them to take a hard look at a four-year school. We also do top scholar receptions, four of those at Shell Bridge, and then we do one in Knoxville at Club La Conde, where we invite all the tops, the top students in our applicant pool, as well as students who we know are good students who haven't applied yet to those. We share the information on admitted students with our colleges and departments on campus, and then they are beginning to reach out to those students. I mentioned the relationship is important, but sometimes it's just one relationship that makes a difference. It might be a relationship with a faculty member, it might be a relationship with a admission counselor. But as we're reaching out to students, we want to make sure that we're giving several people opportunities to build those relationships. Our Office of Academic Advising is going out into area high schools and doing pre-advising sessions before students come for orientation. We've divided up all of, or we've not divided up, we've identified our top 100 feeder schools, and our admission counselors are working specifically in the schools in their area. Every student gets, every admitted student gets a handwritten note. Many of them are getting phone calls, and then our counselors are going to those schools to meet specifically with those admitted students to try to encourage them to come to ETSU. We've participated in academic signing days at area high schools. Dr. Nolan's been going to high schools in the area to prevent, to present admission certificates specifically to admitted students. We go to high school award day and nights programs and present the scholarship certificates on behalf of the university. And then again, with Royal &amp; Company, we have a communication plan that encourages students to sign up for orientation. Everything that we're doing at this enrollment and yield stage is encouraging students to take that next step after admission, which is sign up for summer orientations. All right, registration and melt, not much here. We've got them all signed up for orientation. The one thing I would say is, we know that there are some students who come to orientation, register for classes, and then for some reason or another, they're not in our census enrollment. So we lose some students over the course of the summer. So they come, they register for, for classes at orientation in the summer, but then our colleagues in new student and family programs will do three summer send-offs this year, one in Sevierville, one in Chattanooga, and then one in Nashville. We're just kind of trying to tighten the hug a little bit, make sure that we hold on to them through to, to ultimate enrollment. And then we have two programs leading into the, the fall term. One is Quest, which is specifically for students from low-income backgrounds, or students from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds, and then we also have Preview ETSU. So we encourage students to come to those programs four or three days prior to enrollment, so they can go ahead and get acclimated to campus. If we can get them signed up for that, there's a pretty good chance that they're going to be. So thank you all very much for taking the time. My goal today was to give you an overview, not a complete list of everything that we do. I look forward to working with you in the, in the near future. And now, I'd be glad to take any questions or have any discussion with y'all one day.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Item 11 of the day is our first review.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you and good afternoon. I want to take a moment here at the onset of my comments to frame many of the agenda items that you have voted on, heard, or been part of a conversation with today and in the committee meetings over the course of the past couple of months, to frame the activity. So if you look through your agenda, within our agenda today, we've adopted policies for our audit committee. We've adopted an audit charter for that group. We've provided scholarship enhancements within specific targeted areas of the institution. We've approved tenure promotion for faculty, tuition, fees, budgets. We've heard a presentation about the significant work that's underway across campus to grow the enrollment of the institution. You've learned about open meetings and open records, and then you formalized an MOU with mountain states that provides the rules of engagement for your university moving forward with our major healthcare partner. That's a heavy lift in an hour and 20 minutes. That is the most significant and difficult conversation that boards have: tuition fees, tenure promotion, budget. You've done that work today, but you've done that work in committee, and on behalf of the university, I just want to say thank you. Folks watching on livestream, as Lieutenant Governor mentioned, have not had the opportunity to see the hours that you have spent asking questions about tuition fees, asking for additional information about budget. They've not had the opportunity to see the hours that you've invested in the audit report that Chairman Gold had provided an overview of. So on behalf of the university, I just wanted to thank you for the time that you've invested, and thank you for all the times that you've asked why. Every time you ask why, we're better as a university. So when you ask, why didn't my neighbor receive a letter informing them about East Tennessee State University? Or why is a financial aid process this way? Or why does a business process run that way? We're better as an institution. So as we move forward in the months and years to come, please continue to ask why, and we're going to put you in positions where you have the opportunity to learn more about the university. Your open records presentation was by design, as you heard Ed reference. We will have the opportunity for information sessions where you can get out about and across campus, meet with faculty, staff, tour the fiscal plant. Those learning sessions are going to be sessions in which you can physically get your hands dirty and learn about this university. Continue to push us and ask the question of why. Since we were last together, there've been a number of things that have occurred on your campus, and I just want to provide a few updates and share some good news. First, I want to share the results of our Saks visit. I want to thank the board members who took time to meet with our Saks visiting team. That visit went extremely well. The results that we received from our visiting team indicate that the recommendation will be presented to the Saks board in December for reaffirmation, and reaffirmation with no findings, which for us is a positive, which means we don't have any additional follow-up work to do. I particularly want to thank Dr. Sherry Clavier, Dr. Mike Koff, Dr. Burt Bach for their work in making that reaffirmation work go as smoothly as it did. The chair mentioned a second point of accomplishment, and that was a number 2002. Largest graduating class in the history of the university walked across the stage in two separate ceremonies in May and received their degrees. We are positioned, you saw the upward leading indicators from an academic perspective in the freshman class of 13, 14, 15, and 16. I think you'll see our graduation rates move, and I anticipate that this fall, we'll have the single best fall-to-fall retention rate since 1986. If we were to take a snapshot now, 75% of last year's freshman class will return for their second year of college. That's if we were to take the snapshot now. We anticipate that number will move a little bit more in a positive, but a 75% fall-to-fall retention rate is the highest retention rate we've had since 1986, which is moving us towards that strategic planning goal of an 85% retention rate. Today's a milestone event. For the first time in the history of our university, tenure and promotion was acted upon locally. Today was also the first time in the history of our university in which tuition and fees were acted upon locally. One of the most difficult decisions that we have as staff is to recommend to you a fee increase, and the most difficult, among the most difficult decisions you'll make as a board, is to accept that recommendation. I know that was not an easy recommendation. Fees will increase on a base level, right around $111, and if you include all mandatory fees, right at $172. That's the second lowest fee increase in about 20 years at the university. The lowest fee increase was last year. So while any fee increase is something we want to work to avoid, we are in a position in which that fee increase is below 4%, which is the cap that was established by THEC. Want to take a moment to mention something within athletics. You heard an audit report today that provides a glimpse of the athletic department that's not reflective of the athletic department as a whole. We have an athletic department in which we saw eight conference championships or NCAA tournament appearances. Softball made the NCAA tournament for the first time in the history of the program. But our men's athletic program was named the Outstanding Athletic Program in the SOCON for the second year in a row. But for me, that's not the real story of our athletic department. The real story of our athletic department are the 29 student athletes who had perfect 4.0 GPAs in the fall. The real story of the athletic department are student athletes like Brooke Baxter and softball, who graduated with a perfect 4.0 GPA and will be a first-year student at the Quillan College of Medicine this fall. So as you look at the things that you're going to read about in the papers over the course of the next couple of days, that's not the story of our athletic department. The story of the athletic department is eight conference tournaments and the success of our student athletes, personified by folks such as Brooke Baxter with her perfect 4.0 GPA. There have been some things that have happened within the institution from a point of recognition, and one of those points of recognition is in the relationship that we're building with alums in business and industry across the region. This number is not altogether final, but we are on target to have the best level in terms of a fundraising year in recordable history. As of now, we're tracking to, to raise right at 18.9, almost $19 million. So as you look at leading indicators, I'm not standing here today to say everything at your university is perfect. As you saw within the audit presentation, we have room for improvement, and there'll be some other personnel matters in time that'll generate a lot of attention. But as you look at the institution, we're making significant headway towards achieving our strategic planning goals. We're working to realize the enrollment objective. Brian Henley walked you through a significant amount of work. Our goal's 2,100 freshmen in the fall. We may or may not be a 2,100 freshman, but if we're not there, it's not because we didn't put a significant, significant amount of effort into the plan. I want to, before transitioning into what is a little bit of a PowerPoint, talk some about some effort that we have made as a campus over the course of the past couple of years to really focus on the campus environment and the campus climate. As you look at things that will emerge across the course of the summer related to the campus and conversations about the university, one of the things that may get lost in that conversation is that every single student at our campus will go through Haven training related to sexual assault, sexual out, sexual prevention, as well as campus climate for diversity. Last year, we had more than 2,556 employees who went through training on sexual harassment. And as you look at the training and professional development, the investment that we're making in our campus, we're making an investment to ensure that not only is this a great place for students to learn, but this is a great place for our employees to live, work, and play, and to call home. So, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to take a little bit of time to set some context around things that are occurring at campus, but also to share some good news. Largest graduating class in the history of the institution, positioned to really see some growth in terms of student retention. And then one thing that I'd like to close on is the focus on research. You will see some major announcements related to research here in the next couple of months, but one piece that I am pleased to share is that our College of Nursing and the Center for Community Health and Applied Outreach was the recent recipient of a $3.3 million grant to assist with women's health issues for low-income females across the region. So just sharing a little bit of information that's positive, sharing with you some of the good work that your staff is doing, and would be happy to take any questions before transitioning into the two items that do appear on the agenda, which is an update on the legislative session and an update on some capital projects. All right, then, let me jump into the slides, and we'll see if I can work the quicker. Some of this information was shared with your finance committee this morning. I will not I will not go into the level of detail that we went into with the finance committee, but I did want to update the full board on the following projects. Martin Center, football stadium, the renovations to this building, renovations to Building 60 or Interprofessional Education Center, the data center, and then pending renovations on Lamb Hall. If you look at the Martin Center for the Arts, this is a longtime dream of East Tennessee State University and the region as a whole. This building first came onto the planning process in 1986. Just as a frame of reference, in 1986, I was a senior in high school. So that's how long it has taken for this project to make its way to this point in time. It's a $52 million building, and it will be completed in the spring of 2019. It'll be located there on the yellow plot, that is, plot known as Lot 1 adjacent to the Millennium Center. It's a building that from an aerial perspective is tightly pressed next to the Millennium Center, a small courtyard in between that building and the Millennium Center, but the goal of individuals being able to move back and forth between the two. As you look inside that building, this will be a home for the arts at our university, a home for the performing arts, a home for the fine arts, but a home in three main rooms that will house a recital hall that seats about 1,200 patrons, a main hall for about 1,200, and then an experimental theater, Black Box Theater, which is the pink box to the left of that map, and then in the back, practice space, rehearsal space, faculty office space, et cetera. And then here's the second story of the building, which is the level that will primarily house some back office machine, et cetera, and then the second level of seating. That is the side view of the facility, so if you were standing at the Bank of Tennessee ATM terminal looking towards the Millennium Center, that in rough frame is what the building would look like in terms of scale. This will be a massive facility. It will encompass most of Lot 1. There's the building from the street level, so you can see that it is a building with significant scale, but architecturally, it's designed to fit thematically within the design frame of the Millennium Center. That is the view from the main theater. There's the view within the recital hall. And here's your timeframe in terms of completion. We will break ground on this building right around the start of the academic semester, so somewhere August and September. As we move through the fall, we'll be then doing site work, all of that preparation. By this time next year, Lot 1 should look like an erector set, as that project is then starting to move through some real tangible, invisible aspects of completion. You move then through the full construction phase, and we're hopeful that within the 1920 academic year, that we're opening the doors to that facility. It is a facility that will be developed in partnership with the city of Johnson City. We will have a facility that in addition to providing a state-of-the-art learning experience for our students and a teaching experience for our faculty and staff, will be a home for the arts across this portion of the tri-cities. Next is football stadium. If you've not had a chance to drive by, it is moving towards completion. We're right around 90 days away from the first football game. There's still a lot of work left to be done, but as you can see through the six pictures here on the slides, we've accomplished a great deal over the course of the past year. There's the timeframe for the facility. We remain on schedule and under budget, which are probably the two most important things you need to know, on schedule and under budget, but there's still a lot of work left to be done. Seating will go in, final seating will be phrased by about, framed by about August the 6th. We've got to put up the video boards, all the sound technology, landscaping work, interior work for the boxes, et cetera, but everything is moving towards completion, and then there'll be some site enhancements so that the athletic facilities, including tennis, will really move together in a concerted manner. Next is this building. It's a $41 million project, but with the addition of food service enhancements, it'll be about a $46 million project slated to be completed somewhere in 2019. I joked in the finance meeting that we have two different architects, and I think you can tell that by the design for the Martin Center and the design here. I really enjoy the architects for the Culp Center because they've got a great 3D designer, and you can see things in a computer graphical design perspective that look a little bit different than for the Martin Center. But that is a sketch of the building in its current form. The curve ties in well with the amphitheater to the left, but the ramps on the exterior of this building will come down, will put an addition on the facility that will provide for an expansion of food service options for our students. Essentially, this building will become the living room for East Tennessee State University. This is a complicated project, and it's a project that involves a compressed timeframe. It's a project that will involve the displacement of about 250 offices. The amphitheater will not be accessible for the entirety of the renovation. Lot 35, which is the parking lot between here and Reese, will come offline. We're hopeful that we'll be able to access the auditorium during the period of renovation because you heard Brian talk about open houses, about those orientation sessions. All of that work occurs in the Martha Street Culp Auditorium, and without that auditorium, and we've got to look at an alternative space for that activity. We'll lose portions of the food service, so there's a lot of complexity here. If anything gets off the rails, it really makes our renovation timeframes even tighter. The reason that is important is because every single one of these offices call this building home. So from our advising services to the source, which worked with our student groups, to the student newspaper, all the way down to the credit union, every single one of these offices will be displaced by the renovation of this building. That's where, from my perspective, I think it's important that we as a board begin looking forward, not only at where we're going to temporarily place these facilities, but also at the possibility for us to begin formal negotiations with the city around a lease or potential permanent acquisition of the Millennium Center. So over the course of the next year, we'll work with your finance committee and the board as a whole as those conversations begin to unfold. I don't know if that will be a lease or a potential lease acquisition. That will work its way through in time, and as Lieutenant Governor knows, this will involve a lot of conversations with folks in Nashville, but I wanted to give you advance notice that because of this, I think it's incumbent that we as staff begin those conversations sooner rather than later. Next is the Center for Interprofessional Health, or as a layperson for me, that's the SIM Center. It's located on the VA campus, Building 60. This is a project that by this time next year will be nearing completion. This will be the Center for Interprofessional Health, Education, and Training on Campus, all of our medical simulation for pharmacy, physical therapy, and medicine. Not all, but a significant portion will be housed there, but a chance for students to learn in interprofessional teams as they transition into the workforce. That's the building with the construction fence up around it. If you were to drive by Building 60 now, you'd wonder from the front what in the world's going on. What's going on is an interior renovation. For those of you who've had the opportunity to go in the Gattan College of Pharmacy, we're doing something similar to this building that we have with Gattan, taking a wonderful 100-year-old building with magnificent bones and bringing it up to 2017 standards. And I want to thank Dr. Larry Calhoun, who is coordinating this effort on behalf of the university. And there's the time schedule for that facility. Next is campus data center. We will soon open this facility, but it's a new home for all the back office IT infrastructure across campus, and as I mentioned, this is a project that is getting ready to come to completion. And here's the next big project on the doorstep. So every one of those projects that I just walked through, funding has been received. We're either completed with design or we're in the mid-phases of design. Lamb Hall is beginning today. Lamb Hall, we received funding in Governor Haslam's budget for this facility. We've yet to select a project designer. It's yet to go before the State Building Commission. In fact, as we move through Capitol Severance, this may be the first project that we do on our own, but the significance of Lamb Hall is that as we look at the next phase, the next phase is beginning the fundraising campaign for the Capitol match. Over the course of the next three years, we'll then go through designer selection. It will bring similar timeframes for Lamb Hall as we just did for the other projects. But this is, I think, a very exciting project for the institution because it is classroom space on the main campus, and we've not added classroom space on the physical main campus since we opened the library. So let me pause for any questions on the facilities portion of this update before moving into the legislative session. Legislative review. This, from my perspective, was an extremely successful legislative session, a session in which we received support for the outcomes formula as well as salary enhancements. We received support for Lamb Hall. Unfortunately, we were not able to adjust the matching requirement for Lamb Hall, so it remains at 25%. We received support for deferred maintenance projects. I'll walk you through some of the changes that were made to the Focus Act, some of the changes which took their genesis from conversations that occurred here with THEC back in March, some things around campus safety. There was a lot of work that your staff was engaged in over the course of the session related to out-of-state students and DACA students, work that did not yield the fruit that we had hoped, but will gear up again for next year, and then some major policy changes that impact access, veterans, and free speech. So with respect to those policy changes, the first is access. Everyone's heard of Tennessee Promise, last dollar scholarship for high school students to attend a community college at no charge. Tennessee Reconnect does the same thing for adults. So if you're an adult student with some college but no degree, Tennessee Reconnect makes it possible for you to attend a community college on a last-dollar scholarship at no cost. So for the state to reach its drive-to-55 objectives, it's important for more adults with some college but no degree to go back for post-secondary training, and that's what Reconnect does. It makes it possible for any Tennessean who meets the residency requirements to go back to college at no cost on a last-dollar scholarship. Mind you, that college being a community college. Why is it important for us? Because if you're a 32-year-old displaced worker who's going back to Northeast State to get an associate's degree, that worker is then positioned to transfer to the university to continue those skills in computer science, nursing, or teacher education. The next is the Strong Act, which is focused on members of the National Guard, ensuring that members of the National Guard who have some college but no degree have the opportunity to go to college on a last-dollar scholarship. But that impacts us. So you heard Brian Henley talk about our recruitment efforts for freshmen. At a later meeting, he'll talk to you about what we're doing with transfer students, and you'll hear us talk about what we're doing to recruit veteran students to campus. But the Strong Act is another piece of a different funnel that we'll be able to tap in time to help allow us meet our 18,000 student enrollment goals. There were some changes to the Focus Act. One change extends policy provisions related to campus police, public safety, et cetera, whistle call provisions as it relates to audit. The other change allows members of our board and the other boards across the campus to serve on boards of private colleges or universities. So as some of you have had to step off of boards of other institutions, be they Martin Methodist or other institutions, this allows you the opportunity to serve on another board that is post-secondary as long as that board is a private institution. So that's a change that occurred this legislative session. And then the final piece of legislation, we are the first state in the nation to recognize the importance of academic freedom in code. This legislation becomes effective January 1, 2018. So over the course of the next couple of months, we will make adjustments to our internal operating policy that we'll then bring to you, but it will involve change to practice on campus. Right now on campus, we have free speech zones that are designated. The space in front of Borchuk Plaza is one of those free speech zones. As a result of this, the entire campus is a free speech zone, so you'll see us bring to you the process through which we, as a staff, will begin implementing the provisions outlined here within Tennessee Code annotated. There are other pieces of legislation that were passed this session, but these, from my perspective, were the four most significant pieces of legislation that impact the university. You'll see there's nothing here related to guns. There was not an expansion of these insurance increases and partial funding for a 3% salary pool. There was also support for capital outlay. You see the $17.3 million for Lamb Hall. The differential between that and the total dollar amount is the amount that we'll need to raise, and Pam Ritter, Dr. Bishop, and staff will start to frame the committee that will guide the fundraising efforts for Lamb Hall. There was $8.7 million for other projects at the university for safety and structural upgrades, for some things in the College of Medicine, upgrades to Valley Brook, as well as HVAC systems across campus. In all, it was an outstanding legislative session. It's rare for us to receive a new facility. It's rare for us to receive four deferred maintenance projects. It's also rare for us to be in a position in which we're receiving operating dollars and salary enhancements. For those of you who pay attention to post-secondary education across the country, or for those of you who have family members in Illinois, you know that we're in a very different position than many other states. State of West Virginia is looking at across-the-board budget reductions in excess of 15%. Illinois still doesn't have a budget to this date, and if you're part of a campus and you're a Board of Trustees for a campus, whose fee increase is less than 5%, and you're building new buildings, there's some good things happening at that campus. If members of the Board of Trustees, there's some good things happening at East Tennessee State University. Mr. Chair, that concludes my formal presentation. We'd be happy to address questions on any other topics.
Questions from the board? On behalf of the board, Brian, I'd just like to thank you for your tireless effort for ETSU. It's just amazing the amount of work that you put into this, and it's an exciting time. Thank you.
I look with good thoughts. I'm just one piece of a big puzzle.
Well, at this time, we move to item 12, which is our executive session. If there are no further questions to come before the board, we'll adjourn the meeting this portion of our meeting.